I'm Commissioner Mary Ann Boarder, so I'm the Chair of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, and I chair our Region 6 Behavioral Health Chair as well that governs behavioral health service across a five-county area. But today, we're here to talk about the services that Douglas County provides when it comes to mental health. And what we did as a board is we've made mental health a priority of ours with our ARCA dollars. So we had $55 million given to us first round. We have $55 million the second round. There've been projects throughout the first allocation that we already spent the dollars on. This one, we said, we're going to take $50 million, I've got $55, and set it aside specifically for, hopefully, this project. And this project is a study that we commissioned between our Department of Corrections and our Community Mental Health Center. Over the course of the years, they have become much more coordinated and collaborative in what they provide together for those that are individuals that are incarcerated, individuals coming out of the corrections facility, and those served within our Community Mental Health Center. So we said, you guys sit down with Al Pavandra, who we hired to do the study, and you tell the board, come up with some recommendations of what you think a mental health facility, with using your two areas of expertise, what that would mean or what that would look like. And come back to us with some recommendations that we can take a look at. And so that was the first phase. They did the actual kind of conceptual work. The second phase is looking at what they came up with, those recommendations. And what we're here tonight is to, one, educate you on what we do in Douglas County when it comes to mental health, but also to tell you the components of our study and what the recommendations are, and then ask for any input or questions that you have about the study or about what we provide. And then from that, we'll go ahead and gather once we're done. This is the last town call meeting. We'll gather together and we'll decide as a board if we want to move forward, and if we do move forward, which recommendation from staff and the consultant do we want to move forward with? And so, without any further ado, I'll introduce Al, again, Pavandra, who was the architect that is hired to work with our staff to do this session. With that, Al?
Thanks, Mary Ann. Good evening, and thank you for all for coming out here on this cold night. As Mary Ann explained, there are two components for mental health that Douglas County provides services for. The one on the left is the Community Mental Health Center, which has had a mental health component retrofitted into it years ago. And Sherry Driver is the director of that program, and she's going to talk about her facility and some of the shortcomings of her facility and some of the plans going forward. Mike Meyer, to the right of Sherry, runs the Douglas County Department of Corrections Facility, which is downtown on 16th and Leavenworth. And he has been inundated, his facility has been inundated with mental health inmates, a variety of mental health issues. The facility has been initiated in the late '70s and then added on to twice. And Mike will talk in detail about how his operations work now and what he'd like to see going forward. So tonight, we're going to talk about the background and history of Douglas County mental health. We're going to talk about collaborations that are happening now and collaborations that could happen in the future with an improved facility or facilities. We're going to talk about the advantages and disadvantages of co-locations. So what this study, Phase Two, is looking at is whether we should have two separate facilities, as there are now, two separate improved facilities, or should we combine them because of collaboration that happens? And there could be some staff efficiencies, and Mike and Sherry are going to get into that in detail. And then at the end, we're going to talk about our vision for best practices for mental health in the built environment. And then, as Mary Ann talked about, we're going to solicit your comments and concerns and information that you'd like to impart on us. And that's, we're here on our fourth town meeting now, and we've got a lot of feedback in the previous three. And it was very valuable to the county board members, who have to ultimately make the decision to go forward or to do nothing. As Mary Ann talked about, I started on this facility at the beginning of the year, probably around February is when we had started our first meetings. And through the spring, worked with Mike and Sherry on what they have now, what spaces they have now, and looking at their vision for the future. What would they like to have? And how would it be composed? What kind of adjacencies would be happening? So we created this space program, and then we said, okay, in Phase Two, what we need to do is we need to define a project or projects to present to the county board so they can make a decision on going forward with the money that they have available. Phase Three, again, if the county board decides to do something, they could do nothing. But if they decide to go forward with this project, whether it's a co-located facility or separate facilities, then design, construction, and occupancy would be happening over the next three years. And with that, I'm going to give this to Sherry. Sherry, we have a, if you want to, where to first click up.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here this evening. My name is Sherry Driver, and I'm the administrator of the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center. And I'm here to tell you a little bit about the history of the Community Mental Health Center. The Community Mental Health Center was developed in 1970 by a mental health center grant. We were located in the health center. We currently are located on the first floor and on the fifth floor. We have had some renovations to our departments throughout the years. The most recent one was in 2020, when we did some renovations of our two acute care units. The reason we did those is to meet regulatory standards for what is called ligature. Ligature is anything that could allow an individual to hurt themselves or to hurt someone else. The departments that are within the Community Mental Health Center that are located in the Douglas County Health Center. Now, please remember, the Douglas County Health Center is 95-plus percent occupied by individuals that are considered individuals of aging. That's the terminology that we currently utilize. That is for individuals who are in nursing homes, assisted livings, hospice care, et cetera. So this building that Al showed on the first slide that houses our outpatient department and our acute inpatient department is really, from top to bottom, 95-plus percent individuals' homes. These are individuals who live there. The Community Mental Health Center is divided into four different departments. Our outpatient clinic, which again is here on the first floor when you come in the main entrance where there is security. We have an outpatient clinic with medication management, therapy, chemical dependency evaluations, and intensive outpatient. Then on this side of the hallway, we have a day treatment program. Day treatment program is where individuals come in right after they've had an acute psychiatric hospitalization or to prevent an acute psychiatric hospitalization. We provide them with programming Monday through Friday, nine to five. And then there's a pharmacy down the hallway that is ran by long-term care that we utilize. Then you go up to the fifth floor, take an elevator, one of our elevators, up to the fifth floor, and you're going to have a psychiatric intensive care unit, which is currently eight beds. And down a very long corridor, this is administration and offices, is our acute unit. So it's a general acute care, all for adults 19 years and older who have had a recent exacerbation of their behavioral health issues. So you can see some of those issues there with our programs. We also have an off-site program, which is our social detoxification program located near the Sienna Francis House. And then we have our fourth department, which is our interface with corrections, and I will speak about that a little bit later. Next slide, please, sir. This will give you some of the pictures of our current facility. This is the long corridor that I talked about that divides our two acute care units. Psychiatric intensive care is at one end, very, very long hallway to the next end. This is one of our sleeping rooms for both units. That's what our sleeping room looks like. This is the hallway going down our intensive care unit. And this is what the living room on our general unit would look like. It's larger than our intensive care unit, but it's, you can kind of get the idea of what an acute care facility might look like in the olden days, or many years ago. There are several challenges that we face as a community mental health center when we're trying to serve individuals, both inpatient and out. We're housed in a long-term care facility, and all of our support services are provided by a long-term care facility. Security, nursing, dietary, pharmacy are all provided within long-term care. Works excellent for long-term care because they're designed to work with individuals of aging. Community Mental Health Center, we're designed to work with individuals who experience severe mental health symptoms, substance use, sometimes homelessness, medical issues. Very different type of support services are needed to be tailored to make sure we're providing trauma-informed care in a therapeutic environment for those individuals. In addition to that, when you look at our floor and our departments, you can see that our space really is limited, and it's not best practice and standards. There's a lack of natural sunlight. There's an inability to get outside and be able to do things in a courtyard and get that therapy from that environment and from nature. There's also, the acoustics here, it is extremely loud. So if I'm very upset and I'm yelling, you can hear that from the intensive care unit into my office in the administrative area, because it's so loud. Not therapeutic to other individuals that are in the hospital to try to get better. In addition, we have infection control issues, which came extremely apparent during COVID because we have shared bathrooms for male and female. There's no bathrooms in their rooms, no showers in their rooms. And so that also is an issue that we need to address and hope to address in any future construction or renovation that might take place. This is a little bit of the background of the Community Mental Health Center and some of our statistics of individuals that we've served. As you can see here in our daily average census, and what I want to point out is, when COVID hit, and we've had some construction issues and renovations where we've closed units, we've taken a significant dip. Like, most individuals have been impacted with COVID. And that's, Mike's numbers have been changed with COVID as well. We're starting to trend back up in our departments, but it has impacted all of our services, just like it has the community. So these are average number of patients that we have, total patients served to date. So we average, you know, around 800-plus patients that we see. Number of days, about 1,600. Our clinic is very busy with individuals coming out, again, of someone's home. So you can see there, we have anywhere from 12,000, you know, plus visits per year. Our detox program, which is off-site, around 1,300. And then, just as involved individuals that we may collaborate with, with corrections, 99.9% of the time collaborate with corrections, is around 702 for the most recent year.
All right, thank you, everybody, for coming. My name is Mike Myers, and I'm the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. I'll try and, you're teaching me stand-up, I'll write here a little bit. So this is a diagram of our jail. And as Al mentioned, it was constructed in three different time periods. The original construction in the late '70s is approximately this space here. There's an annex built up here in the '80s. And then all of this, with the bigger housing units, was opened in 2004. Zero square feet were designed for the provision of mental health care and services. Yet, of the new addition, about, well, 50% of the floor plan of the 2004 addition, where the majority of our inmates are housed, half of it is now housing individuals in different levels of acuity, but suffering from, in some cases, very profound mental illness. And the blue, the units in blue are where males are housed with mental health issues, and the green are females. And they tend to be, like I said, there are step downs as we get people stabilized and/or people aren't that acute when they come in. But we do have some very significant, very significantly ill individuals that come in every day. And lastly, before we move on to the next slide, we don't have any safe and private spaces for the provision of mental health care. Services are often delivered through a door, talking through a closed door with a window. Maybe, in certain cases, the door open, but, you know, not, there's no privacy. You know, correctional officers are present to assure the safety of both the inmate, other inmates, and the mental health professional. So we are in extreme disadvantage in housing, and I'll get to the statistics in a little bit, but we house, as you can tell, a significant portion of our jail. We are housing individuals with acute mental illness without the ability to have a space to provide services in a therapeutic manner. So here's an example. This is a cell in our infirmary. You can tell it's not anywhere where any of us would choose to spend time. But this is, if you were on, came in in a mental health crisis and you were suicidal, this is where we would keep you. It's darker, there's no color, and it certainly is probably the opposite of what any of us would consider therapeutic. This is our infirmary day room. You can see that this is where, there's a SW on this door. That's indicating that that person inside that room is on a suicide watch. Our mental health professionals would basically come and talk to that person, probably, you know, through that door, through those windows. That is, you know, the best we can do with the facility that we have. This is our maximum, what we would call our maximum security unit, is housing unit 20. These are also, for the most part, filled with people who are severely ill and dangerous, but maybe not suicidal. So, again, this is an environment where you can say it's the same layout, you know, the cells look the same. And this is where, you know, mental health providers would go from door to door to door to provide the services. There is no space on those housing units, there's no private offices. There is not the ability to provide those services in a therapeutic manner. The, as Sherry talked, this is concrete and steel. It is also very loud. So the, you know, inmates who may be kicking doors, yelling and screaming, you know, is a disruption to everybody in that housing unit. And it really can be sort of an echo chamber in that environment. So one of the things that I think is also quite important to realize is that individuals, and we're actually better than the national average, individuals who, two people come to jail, one severely mentally ill and the other one is not, but they come in on the same charges. The national average, they stay around four times as long in jail as somebody without a mental illness. This is what, when we refer to criminalizing mental illness, this is part of what we're talking about, is people stay incarcerated longer. And at the bottom, you know, as much as you want to explain it with how things go case by case, they stay longer when they're mentally ill. And so you can see in Douglas County, we're a little better. It's not four times the amount, but it's still significantly higher and in some cases, more than double. But the blue line is the average length of stay for individuals with a mental illness. The orange line is those without, that have not been diagnosed with a severe mental illness, or we use the acronym SMI. So the percentage of individuals booked with an SMI, you can see, it probably hovers right around that 20% line, sometimes a little higher, sometimes a little lower. I'll give you the raw numbers in a minute. But, so that's, you know, basically, one in five people who's booked into our jail. And I'm, this is a severe mental illness. I'm not talking about a mild depression or some, you know, low-level anxiety. These are people that have severe mental impairments that need to be addressed and stabilized. And so about one in five individuals coming into our facility fit that description. So approximately 43% of all of our inmates have some level of mental illness. That includes those lower-level illnesses that are a little easier to manage and the severe mental illnesses. And like I said, it kind of ranges between 20% to 25% of all of our bookings have a severe mental illness. I'll give you some data in terms of the, and I wanted to give COVID and non-COVID years here because everybody's data changed during the, you know, the two main years that we were impacted by COVID. Prior to, you know, the pandemic, the previous two years before that, we averaged just shy of 20,000 bookings per year. At these percentages, we had around 8,574 with any type of mental illness and nearly 5,000 with a severe mental illness coming in every year. In '20 and '21, during the pandemic, you can see our numbers went down. Everything in society slowed down, so did crime, so did law enforcement, for that matter. And things were kind of cut down by, I don't know, 15, 20% there at least. And you see, but the numbers, the percentages stayed fairly consistent with the percentages that we saw pre-COVID.
So with that being said, the county started looking at this information a long time ago in regard to individuals with mental health and corrections, and what are some things that we can do? So one of the first projects they did was they developed the Mental Health Diversion Program in 2006. And this is a collaborative program. All of these programs are a collaboration between the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center and Douglas County Corrections. The goal is to reduce recidivism of these individuals back into jail. So to date, we've served 680 individuals within that program. The program's extremely successful, and it has significantly changed individuals' lives. And due to that, we increased the number of staff members we have in that program so we can serve more individuals. And we will be increasing the number of staff members within that program this year as well due to the positive outcomes that we've seen in that program. In 2010, we developed the Intensive Case Management Program. That's funded through Region 6 Behavioral Health Care. It is now called Emergency Community Support. It is specifically targeted to individuals 19 years and older. We reach in, we provide them services within before they're released from corrections, and then we provide them with intensive case management for at least 90 days after they're released. Again, with the entire goal is connecting them with community resources, helping them reestablish in the community, and reducing incarceration. And we've served 756 individuals. And 2013, we developed an education program where Community Mental Health Center staff go into corrections, and we provide them with life skill development, all the skills they need to be successful, viable members of the community. And we have served 610 individuals within that program to date. 2015, we started Second Chance Act Grant. It's an intensive outpatient program. That program provides nine hours a week of group therapy, also individual therapy. And to date, there have been 551 clients enrolled in that program. In 2015, Douglas County joined the Stepping Up Initiative to really hone in on what are we doing with behavioral health, the individuals that are in corrections with behavioral health, both mental health and substance use issues. In 2017, one of the things that we saw is individuals, I'm going to use the word stuck, were getting kind of stuck in corrections because there were chemical dependency issues. They needed to get into treatment, but there was really a long wait for chemical dependency evaluations. So we hired somebody who would go into corrections and provide chemical dependency evaluations, provide recommendations to the judge, and hopefully get those individuals released into the right level of chemical dependency treatment in the community. And so far to date, we have done, we've completed 704 evaluations. In 2018, the county received a NACO Achievement Award for all of the great work that's done between our two departments. In 2019, we received the designation of a Stepping Up Innovator County. That really means the work that we're doing together is extremely innovated, looking at what the other counties in the nation are doing. And then here in 2022, we will be starting a second intensive outpatient program in the jail with another grant that we received. So the work that we do together is extremely important, and we overlap quite a bit. Before I turn it over to Mike, we're going to have a little bit of time to talk about some of the stigma and some of the concerns in regard to a potential co-located facility. We honestly will do whatever the board chooses to do, and we're going to do it to the best of our ability, whether we're two separate facilities or whether we're co-located. As the Director of the Community Mental Health Center, I am going to tell you 100% honesty. I have zero concern about being co-located next to some of Mike's programs because we work so closely together right now. We serve the same individuals right now. And so how can we do that better? The majority of our clients overlap. The majority of Mike's clients in corrections have experienced some form of trauma, chemical dependency, substance use, mental health issues. The, over 80% of the clients that we see inpatient/ outpatient detox will report to us trauma. They'll report to us some form of interaction with a correctional facility. It's how it's designed, it's how it's laid out, and it's how we work together. So if my brother, sister, mother, neighbor happened to be in Mike's facility and also was a client of the Community Mental Health Center, how great would it be for their therapist to be able to walk through locked closed doors that separates our two buildings, but be able to continue services with that individual? So I'm just putting that out there because I want you to know my thought in regard to this. I have spent hours upon hours upon hours researching it. And I think as an innovative county, we can do this, and we can do it really, really well. Mike?
I agree.
I'm sorry.
So as Sherry was saying, we have, we serve a lot of the same people already. It's, I wish that wasn't the case. I wish there was a clearer line between the behavioral health system and the criminal justice system. We, there was a time, maybe 10 or 15 years ago in corrections, where we tried to keep that line. We were not successful, and it's not changing. And so we need to deal with, we need to deal with the reality of we're going to have a significant number of individuals. significant number of individuals who come to the jail who are severely mentally ill. So how can we work to serve them and set them up for success so that they don't keep coming to jail? You can see during, the most recent data that I have available during a pandemic year, 42 admissions per month to the jail were recent clients of the Community Mental Health Center. And pre, the 12 months prior to the pandemic, 75 admissions per month. So about two and a half people a day are coming into the jail that already know Sheri and know Sheri's staff. And so we have been serving the same group of people for many, many years. One of the things, and this is one of my favorite aspects of this proposal, because it, this part of it becomes potentially more than just the Douglas County Department of Corrections and the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center, being able to make our collaboration even more integrated. But it involves other county departments potentially, involves nonprofits in the community. We know that we can't be every solution for every person, and so having a collaborative space where we can build that continuum of care, where people, you take the, the most difficult people we have, the people who are coming into, we have people that get released in the morning and come back to jail in the afternoon. And they do that over and over and over. And we spend an awful lot of money to keep those people in the exact same spot. We maintain the status quo at great cost when we could do something different. And that's what this is all about, is doing something different, doing something more effective, not spending a million dollars on somebody just to keep them homeless and going back from homelessness and incarceration for decades on end, accruing all of the healthcare costs, accruing the court system costs, accruing the costs of incarceration. We could actually invest that money in a person wisely and help them to break that cycle. And, but for those people who are our most vulnerable folks in our, in our county, it's going to take a whole round table of people with different types of expertise to plan comprehensively to set that person up for success because they do have such extreme obstacles. We have some examples of that success in a program that is, is small, but we hope to grow, and it's called the Familiar Faces Program. And in that program, Region Six, through the Stepping Up Initiative, actually brought together around the room, corrections, our corrections mental health, URM provider, the Community Mental Health Center, Medicaid Managed Care, and drug, and actually pharmaceutical companies. And in that program, individuals receive the latest and greatest long-term antipsychotic medications that sometimes have an effectiveness of up to 90 days with a single dose, with a single injection. That's a huge advantage for somebody who's living on the fringes of society if we expect them to remember to take their meds every day when they don't even know where they're going to put their head to sleep that night when they get out. If we can buy them three months worth of being more or less lucid, we can continue to work with them and build from that foundation. And so this program begins in the jail, and pharmaceutical companies provide these medications at no cost in the jail. The Community Mental Health Center becomes the provider and the prescriber when they're in the community. And one of Sheri's emergency community support staff meets with that client, gets to know that client before they're out, and then continues to make sure they get to their appointments and get to, you know, builds all of the services around them. And we've seen some pretty significant success stories with a small number of people, but that's an example of how that collaboration, when you bring all those people in the same room, some really special things can happen. So I'm hoping that, you know, whatever plan comes to fruition includes the space of a, of a Douglas County Community Resources Center. We've had, Sheri and I had some talks with some other county department heads to ask if they would put some of their existing resources in a space like this, you know, veteran services, general assistance, health department. Those are all examples of agencies that we could fit around a person who's in crisis, who's going to be getting out and going back into our community soon, making sure that we're dealing with that person holistically. We could also bring in, we have a lot of collaborations with probation. I guess one of the things I didn't mention, even law enforcement is even part of the Familiar Faces Project, because there is actually a code, so when they come across that person in the community, they know, you know, they can look up and see this person is in the Familiar Faces Program. I have another choice for this person, another contact that I can make instead of bringing them back to jail. And so that's sort of collaborative space. You know, we can deal with mental health, addiction, medical care, housing, overall case management. We can talk about people's nutritional needs, vocational assistance if they're ready for that, and basically whatever else is in front of that person, we can work to plan around.
So I think, hopefully it's clear that the mental health staff and their, their programs that have been developed over the last several years, pretty important. What's lacking is space, correct and appropriate space. So at the conclusion of this study, there's going to be recommendations to the board of a couple of different ideas. And one of them we've mentioned was co-location. And what co-location means is, is providing community mental health and, and community detention mental health inmates under the same roof, basically, but not necessarily, absolutely not co-mingling. A mental health inmate that's incarcerated will never mix with a community mental health. And so a co-located facility means that there would be a correctional mental health housing component, there would be a central support services area for mental health practitioners, and then there would be a, a public entrance to a community mental health facility with, with its housing and outpatient treatment facilities. The center component serves both sides, but the, but the, the two housing components never mix. That's what co-locating means. Now, when we started the program, the Phase One program, we said, we don't know where it's going to go, so let's just design the spaces and come up with a co-located facility complete with all the bells and whistles that need to happen with it. That included a remote site, unknown, and it included having support things like kitchens and laundry and building support systems, et cetera. And we came up with that, that size of 68,300 square feet. We know though, that if, if we locate a co-located facility close to one of the two Douglas County campuses, that we can reduce that significantly because we won't need a kitchen, we won't need food service, we won't need lawn maintenance, we won't need building maintenance, because those are both available at both campuses. For instance, Sheri's program right now is served by the kitchen and the health center. And Mike has his, has his own kitchen. So that, that is why that, that size of that program located at, at one of the campuses would be significantly reduced. So this is the, the 42nd Street, this is Woolworth, this is Pacific up here. This is the, the facility where Sheri's facilities are integrated into this facility. And so we're looking at basically this end of the campus, this is an abandoned building here, to provide one of, one of the components that we are talking about for a separate community mental health facility. The advantages of a, of a co-located facility include all these components. We have, I mentioned the corrections mental health housing, the community mental health housing, and then Sheri's outpatient and day treatment. Food service would be shared, facility maintenance would be shared. Again, if we build it at one of the campuses, that, that could be, that spaces could be eliminated. So a co-located facility, because we're combining both operations into one building, is, is probably going to have the lowest design for construction, staffing and operational costs compared to two separate facilities. I think that Sheri and Mike made a, a pretty important case for the services and programs, Sheri, that could happen, and the quality of services that would, would come at less cost than having two remote facilities. What we found through our public meetings is that there, there has been some pushback on, on the stigma of having a community mental health facility under the same roof as, as a corrections mental health facility. And so that, that is a disadvantage of, of having a co-located facility. Separate locations, advantages in locations. So when we talked about the co-located facility being more efficient size-wise, you can see that we, what we did in, in the first part of the study, Phase One, is we looked at, again, a, a new, new site for both facilities with each having their own kitchens, laundry, et cetera. So that really got bloomed up to a large number of square footage. And so that's the disadvantage of, of this. We have to have the interest in public lobby, we have to have separate administration, we have to have intake, release, and property shared, and then we have to have our food service and maintenance. So all that stuff has to be repeated, and that's why that, that, that got fairly big. Now again, if, if separate facilities are, are located within one of the two campuses, we can, you know, we can start cutting off some of these spaces. So again, the disadvantage of this is because there's two different facilities and, and all the, all the components that go with it, it's going to cost more. But the public perception of, of having separate facilities and separate sites is, is a perceived advantage to, to some of the people that, that we, we brought together in, in the town So where do we go from here with spaces? So our study is looking at, again, two separate facilities, one for corrections, one for community, serving mental health, and then combining them into a combined facility, co-located. We're hoping that any one of those options is probably going to be at the campuses so we can reduce the cost and, and staffing burden that these facilities would have. What are our goals? Our goals are operational efficiency. If you, if you look at, remember the, the pictures that Sheri showed about her long corridors, having staff go all the way across that fifth floor just to get from one crisis to another, from one, one housing component to another. And then Mike having his 64-bed housing units reduced down to 32-bed because he can't double bunk when he gets crowded, et cetera. So there's, there's some issues with having an operation efficiency in whatever we come up with. And then creating a positive healing environment, promoting clinical excellence. So we're hoping that the solution, if the county board goes forward with something, is going to be completely different type of spaces to help support the wonderful programs that they've developed. And then as Mike is pointing out, trying to have whatever we come up with, continuing the care beyond just being locked up and kicking them out the door. So that, that's, you know, that's, that's the goals here, what we're trying to do with, with the new facility or new facilities. What's it going to look like? Well, our goal is to have a non-institutional design, some, some really positive connections to nature, low-rise construction and bright open spaces. Connections to nature and then natural materials are all components we hope to put into either a co-located facility or a separate facility. If you remember the spaces that Mike and Sheri showed you on their facilities, we're looking at completely different types of spaces. Example of a living room, example of intake assessment room, example of a patient room, again, access to natural light, a calming room, which is very prevalent in, in new contemporary mental health facilities. What we've learned in our research in Phase One is some of the best facilities that have been built in the last decade for mental health have really been in the Scandinavian countries. And some of these images are from some of those, some of those examples. So today's facilities still have their boundaries, but more than ever are less places of confinement and more places of treatment and preparation for return to the, to the outside world. So in summary, neither facilities were designed to provide mental health. So the spaces are not appropriate for, for what people do today to, to support and provide care for mental health, either a patient or an inmate. And then collaboration between the two county departments to reduce overall costs and increase efficiency in a collaborative facility is a really, real possibility. However, there, if they, if there is a, a co-located facility, careful planning in the, in the organization of the spaces to have that complete separation and have the public be comfortable with having, entering in a community mental health facility that way beyond, beyond the support corps is, is also handling adjudicated mental health inmates. So it's an essential question that we have to resolve during the course of the study, and it's a question that the county board's going to have to answer. So what are the choices? Do nothing, leave everything the way it is, create two separate facilities, one for community mental health, one for corrections mental health, or combine the facilities. And so we're looking at solutions to that now, and we're looking at specific site locations and specific layouts. And that's what we're going to propose at the, at the end of the year, and the county board is going to decide what they want to do, if anything. So whatever the final build solution entails, current best practice facility design is critical to the project's successful outcome. And with that, I'm going to open up to any discussion that Mary Ann wants to leave.
Yes, thank you. And I might just say that when we entered this study concept, and I, I talked actually to a lot of you in this room about mental health, and mental health, there's a lot of issues in the community of mental health. And the county, we are focusing on the two departments that we have control over, that we can, again, see what we can do more collaboratively and cooperatively together to address what we have control over, basically. And again, the study was commissioned to specifically look at corrections and to look at the mental health facility that we have on 42nd Street. As we started, I just wanted to mention that a couple more of, the commissioner from my board came in, Commissioner Mike Crand, Commissioner Maureen Boyle have joined us. And so with that, what we've been doing for this part of the town hall is just to open it up and give us your thoughts on what, just mental health in general, what you think about what you've seen in the study. We hope that we have given you some level of education of what those departments do and what we're responsible for as a county. But we'll, we'll do this comments for five minutes. Once a minute hits, I'll say, we have one minute left, and then we'll go on to the next one. So I'll open it up for discussion. And I also want to say before, I'm sorry, before, I'm very, very interested to see all the young people here from Scott High School. Thank you all for being here. That's, that's impressive. Thank you. Okay.
My, my question is that in looking at diagrams and things that you presented here, and I'm trying to get a feel as to what have the county decided as far as when it comes to one facility to make up for region, how pretty is staff, they feel the community would be needed. Now I'm looking at the diagrams and those kinds of things, so have you decided which areas will be located, how we're going to be able to do this?
Not yet. So again, this was to gather that information from our staff on what their quote needs, wishes were, and a couple wishes were in a couple of areas. And so that has not been decided in this direction, where we're going to go yet.
I see. Doesn't it make no sense to maybe kind of get the building so you can kind of visualize how each and every thing would be able to fit into that as opposed to later on, you know, kind of highlight something that's really not adequate.
We did it. Bingo, because that's what we're doing. We're gathering information as to what is needed, and then we'll decide if we want to do that in a co-located facility, two separate facilities, just do one facility. And then once we decide that, then that's when the design really comes into play. The design that they put up here and in the little PowerPoint was to give the community some idea of what there is out there that we could potentially look at.
Hi. So my name's Sam. I'm an occupational therapist at Lasting Hope Recovery Center. And I kind of, it's unfortunate to say, but it feels like Lasting Hope might be best practice right now. I say that in the sense that there's so much room for improvement. I've been full-time there since May, and I have experience at Utah State Hospital in Provo, and then in Washington DC, just learning all of the mental health practices there and looking at how we're addressing cognitive remediation to actually change the structures in the brain, along with how we're addressing the eight dimensions of wellness to provide a holistic recovery. It's not something we're really doing well yet at Lasting Hope, and I'm curious, how are you guys addressing those two elements as you develop this program?
So that would be our expert when we get to the programming piece of it, that we look at to see what are we currently doing. As Sheri said, there is a lot of information and innovative stuff that has come from our National Association of Counties that we're involved in. Back in 2015, Sheri mentioned the stepping up initiative. I actually brought that to Douglas County, and those are the things that those programs from all those years till now is that we keep continuing to look at what are the best practices and where should we spend our dollars to increase or enhance or start those things.
And not to cut you off, but looking into investments in practitioners. You know, we have a huge issue where you have many practitioners who's at Lasting Hope to support the need for counseling. We have four occupational therapy schools churning out students, churning out practitioners every single year. Unfortunately, there are a lot of barriers facing our ability to practice. Not clear on Practice Act, and then there's a bill in the federal government for the Occupational Therapy Parody Act that allow OTs to get reimbursed from Medicare and Medicaid.
So we actually may have a conversation after this at some point because Beacon has been given, I think about $26 million of ARPA dollars to talk about some of those issues, and we would work with our legislators to address some of those. So yeah, we'd be very, very happy to talk to you about that.
As far as your bed space goes with 20 for the community side, would you want to expand that to a bigger number because of population growth in the law and dealing with what we have dealt with with those few years of COVID? The youth are going to be adults, some of those youth aren't seeing the services they need, and they're going to wind up coming through the doors of corrections, and you're probably going to go from that side right into the community side, and you're going to need the bed space.
And we're blocked a little bit. Even 20 is questionable at this point because we have what's called the Institute of Mental Disease issue where you can only have 16 beds if you want to be reimbursed by Medicaid.
Wow.
And so, and again, it was a federal regulation that during, from what we can find at the national level when we did our study of it, we cannot find how or what reasoning 16 came about other than somebody during the debate pulled that number and said, let's make it 16, and it became 16. So that's why.
It wasn't done by populace, it was done by.
No, it's just a flat, if you want to be reimbursed by Medicaid.
Right, which you do because it offsets costs.
Which you do because that offsets costs. And again, that's one of the big reasons the state shut down the regional centers.
Yeah.
Was because they weren't getting Medicaid, and it was costing them a bunch of money to run them. I mean, there were other, having people be treated in their communities closest to their loved ones is important too. But they did place a hindered tile to be able to provide more bed space, if you will, than what we knew we needed. So yes, we're still working on that.
Taking some politicians' doors and services.
That's right. That's right.
Do you send your skill home to separately?
Yes, this is all adult. This is just adult.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Hi. I'm Mary Ann Fraser-Mine, and I've worked in child welfare, juvenile justice, mental health and homeless services. And I think this is a great idea, although I would like to have some look at the front end. You talked about it too, aging out of the system, end up in corrections. How can we prevent, have we used some of this money to do those community-based services, easy access for folks so that they don't end up in jail? And so that they have that before they end up in a crisis? And that's my feedback. And I know you know that.
Yes, yes, we work on that all the time. Absolutely.
What does the partnership look like with Lincoln Regional Center?
Well, the Lincoln Regional Center, so each region is allocated a certain number of beds, and when you're full, you're full until you move somebody out. We actually have a person who monitors that on a daily basis, and we're actually down some of the beds that they have said they were going to allocate us because they were doing some construction and stuff. But it's an ongoing, everyday conversation, and even Mike and Sheri can attest to it. They have someone in the facility or in the corrections facility that needs to go to the regional center. Sometimes they're sitting waiting, you know, Lasting Hope, they're sitting there waiting for a bed to open up to be able to put somebody else in there.
I wanted to ask Mary, will you just mention to Mary that prevention, where you were speaking in terms of prevention of the youth before they have to go into, or any mental health facility person that is having problems being able to work on a preventative first? Is that what I understand you're saying?
Yes, and it's youth and adults. There's not very many services for adults with significant mental health issues, and so that's why they end up in jail, and that's why they can't get out of jail, and there's no place to go when they're done, even if they don't need the regional center. So we need that whole continuum, which I appreciate the work that you're doing, but how can we bring that whole system, Region Six is great, but what can we do to prevent the jail and corrections being one of the biggest mental health providers in our city, in our town? I do want to say I appreciate the idea of the blue calming room for mental health, and I hope that you don't have a seclusion room.
No.
Thank you.
Oh, no.
Thank you. And if you're trauma-informed care, that would go against trauma-informed care principles.
Absolutely.
Mr. Boyle?
Yeah, I was going to comment to that homeless issue, and I find this very fascinating as a new member of the board, but when Mike Myers from Corrections comes and talks about the prison population, he breaks it down and says, what are the mental health needs? What's going on with the population center? I'm always amazed that, and it always strikes me that about 18 to 20% at any given time, the folks are staying in the correction center because they're homeless.
Right.
And so that's a huge number, and that's not even counting those who are mental health conditions that need to be addressed. So things that I know Mike is doing a really good job of is creating relationships with other organizations in town, Santa Frances House, so they can not only know why are they homeless, could it be they have substance abuse disorder? So bottom line, it's really frustrating to see that. At the same time, I know that we're not just leaving folks that way. I feel like there's a very aggressive approach by the staff at corrections with the help of Sheri and community health to take those people who have conditions that are treatable, or at least those that with just a little bit of guidance can get out of their situation and avoid that recidivism when they're coming back in. So I know it sounds like, it's like, yeah, they're homeless, what do we do? We're not doing anything. But it blows my mind, as like I said, a newcomer on the board, when I pull, dagger to the trenches and listen to what they're, they tell me and the stories they say, every time I ask a question that has to do with this, they say, oh yeah, these are the three programs that we do for this population. It blows me away at the level of dedication that they have and the problem solving that they have. So it's just a point to make that these are really awfully hard, hard problems to figure out, but I do think we've got some very dedicated folks in these directorship positions that are thinking way outside the box in order to make things happen. I'm sure they talk about the familiar face program, talk about innovative, you know? It's like we, the county employee is the familiar face to the person that keeps coming in the door, and every time you see him, it's like, oh, you know, you know who that is, we don't need to bring them to jail, we need to bring them over here. So there are lots of proactive things that are trying to be done to address those things, but this is an incredibly challenging proposition. So if it took me, you know, for a year and a half, almost two years on the board to hear this at every meeting to finally have a really good understanding, so it's really a challenge to, you know, come to a session like this to try to get a, to glean all this information, figure out really how this is going to work.
Well, we've spoken at Lasting Hope with the psychiatrists about if only there was an unhoused psychiatric health program where we could provide the support and resources all in one so that we can get them in that position to move forward, similar to what Community Alliance has to offer. If we can get a patient hooked up with Community Alliance to work through their program, we see less recidivism. So if we had that, the outcomes would be phenomenal.
Yeah, I think the other challenge is it's all about money, you know? Think about, you've got now as a kid in St. Joe's, this mental health facility, why did it close without the money, you know, so they couldn't afford to run anymore? And we have to look at the population we serve, and if we have that much of a mental health problem in our jail, we need to make sure they have services, not that they are being rehabilitated, you know? They need help not to be strayed out. So I think that's the challenge there is that all of it costs money, and then on the other side, the financial brain of us saying we have to maintain the property tax levy where it is. And so there's a challenge. If we could just throw gallons and buckets of money at it, we could solve this problem. But we're doing it under a pretty tight budget without raising property taxes because we're property taxpayers too. We don't miss that law, we can do it that way. So it's really hard, you know? It's like in the, you know, in the field of medicine, so it's really hard. You spend a million dollars to save this 30 week, you know, vaccinate 100,000 kids. And so those are ethical issues. It's really hard to, when it comes down to money, you know, how much is that particularly ethical? So those are the challenges we're having.
I think too, aside from the money, what I've learned in working in this field as assistant living administrator, affordability, you know, there are a lot of laws that most of the people in this room are not aware of that limit. The way that mental health is viewed through the state of Nebraska is rehabilitative, it's not rehabilitative, so they're not going to put money into a rehabilitative situation in need housing. Their intention is to rehabilitate them, while most of us that have been affected by mental illness understand that if there's a rehabilitation for schizophrenia, where is it? And we're just continuing this, and schizophrenia is still here. And so there's a lot of laws out there. I've known several senators over this last year, I've learned a lot about those laws and things that need to be changed. I think there's a lot outside of this, that I think that for those of us that really want to see some change, those changes need to be happening in Lincoln at the federal level. And so those are things that when you're talking to your senators, when you're talking to those people that we're voting for, there are some things in there, and you really have to dig deep into it and, you know, getting some face time with some of those senators and understanding it. It's pretty amazing what limitations are put on people with mental illness, and she's saying that number 16, and that extends outside of the county mental health. When you exceed the number 16, you're no longer a group home, and so then you pop into what we call an assisted living home. And so you can't call them mentally ill facility because you're not allowed to. So we exist with 50 beds as an assisted living. We can serve anybody because we can't call them mentally ill because they're protected under that. Somebody thought it was a protection for them somewhere along the way, and it's up to us to go and do what we need to on a government level, get that changed. That's really where this is great, and I think this is going to serve, you know, understand that 20 beds is no more than what is already there, if that's already what they're operating at.
But I feel that, you know, when it comes down to money, and when people really want what they want, you know, big money, you know, to me, that's a very excuse, and it should not be, and we should all, first, in terms of the human rights of people needing resources and help right now, you know, not, not, you know, wait, you know, because every time you wait, it gets worse and worse.
It's never bad.
And that's a good point, and that's why I'm proud that the county board, right at the get-go, made mental health a priority, and we restated that with the second allocation of the 55 million, that 50 of it we put aside for us to figure out, what again, that we have control of it and that we are responsible for, what we can do better with what they're already doing. So you're right. We're trying to put the, our, what's that, money where you're not there, not where the money is. There you go.
So Mary Ann, can you use that $5 million for upfront services and collaborate with other folks in the community?
Eventually, if we get our study done and decide which route we're going to go. Absolutely. There's been a lot of conversation or ideas that have been thrown out about some things that we could do besides this, in addition to this, in collaboration with this. And again, just for, I just want to remind everybody for this purpose, this is just the adult corrections and those we serve at the Community Mental Health Center that are 19 years and over. We have a whole nother set of things and services that we do when it comes to our youth and the youth detention centers and the youth collaboratives that we have with our community. But this study was specific to Sheri and Mike's operations. Well, I just want to, again, thank everybody for coming out tonight. Like I said, I'm real proud that we, as a county board, have taken this on as a priority, not just for Douglas County, but especially for the people of Douglas County and those that we serve. We have dealt with mental health issues for many, many, many years, and yes, they were here before COVID, and they're going to be here when COVID's done, but COVID exacerbated them. And so now we need to ratchet up, and I feel like we have stepped up as leaders and said, what can we do better even than what we're doing today? And so more to come on this, but this is our last town hall meeting. I appreciate you all coming. You, anybody who wants to talk about this can contact any of us at any time for further conversation, further ideas, further questions. We're here to serve you, you're our bosses, and we love to work for you, and we love to, again, move this ahead in a very positive manner, so.
I was going to say, if they, if any of you, particularly the students, have any other questions, additional information, you can call me out. My name's Patrick Wellingdale, I'm the county administrator. My name's Patrick Livingdale, I'm the county administrator. Can I write my number down? It's 444-6237, 444-6237. And then I can, if you wanted to ask a commissioner a question, I can direct you down, otherwise I can get whatever commissioner.
Patrick is the chief administrative officer for Douglas County, and I also want to introduce Jeff McHale, who's here from our chapter of public properties, who has been instrumental working with Al Pavantra and Sherry and Mike when it comes to putting this study together, and Amber in the back there, who is Mike Myers' chief deputy. So again, we have a lot of people working on this, a lot of good things that I think could come out of this, and we'll just keep putting our work forward and see what we come up with. But again, thank you very, very much. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.